Yes, sir. I got you. Yes, sir. Also.
Oh. Hi. Hi. Yeah. What's this? Yeah. All right. Yeah. I see. Okay. Yeah. I'm pressing. Pressing. So. Pressing. Pressing. It's like. Yeah. Well. No. So. Today. Yes. I know. I said that. I'm like, I'm sorry. That's all. Yeah. Yeah. I got it. Well, good. Yeah. I just speak. Yeah. She's coming. I know. I think. Yeah. We did. We said. I'll say. Yes. I think. Based on our. I think. I think. Yes. I think. Based on our. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I know. Or they say yes in the book. Yes. Yes. Yeah. I think. 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 I understand. Well. Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, I know. It's pretty bad. Yeah. We can talk. We can talk. We can do. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I think. 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 I think.
Oops. Good evening, everyone. We'll start tonight's city council meeting. Welcome to our November 4th meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Our first two items on our agenda are our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we have Pastor Gabriel Hughes from the Providence Reformed Baptist Church with us tonight. Welcome, Gabriel. And please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. If you would join me in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, holy is your name. We come to you on the eve of this election, grateful for your kindness and mercy toward us. The Book of Romans tells us that your kindness is meant to lead us to repentance. Grant us humble hearts as these men and women do the business of our fair city tonight in the interest of the people that they have been appointed by God to lead. Thank you, God, for our first responders, law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs who work to protect and to serve. My wife was in an accident just a few months ago, and so I am personally thankful for their work. Bless our judges also and grant them wisdom to reward the good and punish evil, and justice would prevail according to your word. Our forefathers recognized that all men are created equal and endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. May justice be done even for preborn children, and that your spirit would so move in the hearts of this people so that Proposition 139 would not pass, recognizing that the right to life and the protection of our laws be granted also to them. May the grace of God be proclaimed through your gospel and known in our community, and we know with all our hearts that Jesus Christ is Lord. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, Mr. Jared. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Anthony. Let the roll call show that all members of the council are present. Our next item is Item C, our minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve the minutes of the council regular meeting of October 21st, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Community Service Advisory Board Meeting of September 26, 2024, accept the minutes of the Police Personnel Retirement Board Meeting of August 15, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Airport Advisory Board Minutes of September 24, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Youth Commission Meeting of September 14, 2024.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The minutes are approved. Next is claims against the city. Item D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated October 16 through 29, 2024, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Claims are approved. Next is our meeting agenda. Mr. Rains, is there any change from staff?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Council? Anyone? All right, seeing no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Agenda is approved. We have no special presentations. Consent agenda is Item G. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there any consent agenda item that council wants removed? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Laura, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is our, is Item H, which is our public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. If there's anyone here in the chamber who would like to address the council, please approach the podium, state your name and your address, and please remember you have three minutes, and that this is not an agendized item, so the council cannot comment. Anyone? All right, seeing nobody jump up, then I'm going to close the public comment section, and we'll move to Item I. Item I1, award of contracts. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. We're here tonight because staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve the purchase of one mobile command post from LDV Incorporated and authorize the city manager to enter into the appropriate contracts for this acquisition. The total amount of this is $570,633 plus any applicable taxes. The funding for this is going to be found in a, partially from the Gila River Indian Community Grant Funds that were awarded under a resolution that was already accepted, 5631. The total grant was for the amount of $455,722, which would leave a difference of $146,866.45 that is not covered by the grant, but will be covered by city funds under capital projects and/or police funds, police donation line. The total cost of this vehicle will amount to $602,588.45. There, I know that you have a visual outline of a drawing of this command post, but what I did, Mr. Weaver just put up four pictures, or two pictures, but there's four total of what this command post will look like, obviously minus Laredo Police Department. This, this is the exact model and exactly how our command post would look. This is built under specifications just solely for the CGPD. We will have a say in, partly on how the interior of this looks as where things are situated. And with that, I'd ask, answer any questions.
Well, first of all, thank you to the Gila River Indian Community.
Very much so.
Yeah. It's part of about a two-plus, well, $2.7 million grants that we got this year for nonprofits and for the city. So, yeah, good job. Thank you, chief. Thanks again to the Gila River.
And real, one thing I do want to mention is that this has been on our CIP ever since I've been here. Obviously, the cost of this, there's things more urgent, but Lieutenant Chris Palmer is the one that took this bull by the horns, if you will, and decided that this year he was going to apply for a grant, and.
That's awesome.
And graciously, we were awarded that grant that puts us on this path to getting a new command post. I know, looking at that command post, it looks like a lot, but these things are lasting 20 to 25 years, as long as you upgrade the, the technical side of things. So, we're buying this not only for what our use today, but our use in probably two generations of police officers to follow us.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a comment. I'm really glad to see this, and I'm anxious to take a tour of it. My only.
You want to drive it, Bob?
I'd love to. My only disappointment is that it didn't cost as much as a fire truck, but.
That was one of the conditions that we put into this in the initial contract, that we had to come in under a fire truck.
Oh, gosh. Any other comments or questions? All right. Wow, okay. Seeing that, I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3451. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from LDV, Inc., for the purchase of a mobile command center, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to LDV, Inc., and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3451 as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is Item I2. This is Resolution Number 5713.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Wilson &amp; Company for the amount of $137,360 for the wastewater capacity improvements Phase 4B upgrade evaluation. As everyone's aware, we are underway with construction of our Phase 1 of this project, where Wilson &amp; Company helped us develop a very fast-paced plan and way to get ahead of development, so that we didn't find ourselves in a situation where we had to tell development no. So, we've got that treatment capacity. We're currently under construction to bring the plant from 12 to 18 million gallons a day, and that project is going quite smoothly. However, the, the current plant expansion required us to repurpose a lot of the old pretreatment basins and the influent equalization to avoid upgrading the downstream processes and omitted other improvements that we would typically take into consideration with the plant expansion of 50% of our capacity. So, to complete the capacity upgrade, we're going to be moving forward with this project, where Wilson &amp; Company will complete the engineering analysis and define what portions of the plant need to be upgraded in this Phase 4B of the upgrade. So, we'll be looking at cost analysis, design, design those improvements. We'll be looking at plant security, odor control systems, and developing a presentation to summarize what the results of that study is. This will help us plan for our future plant upgrades that will be needed and for, to support our request for our next CIPs. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from anyone?
Yeah. I just, I think, Kevin, I had some questions for him this week, because we've been hearing around about the, the odors from, that you can smell sometimes from the treatment plant, and I asked about that, and Kevin and his staff were very informative about why. Basically, it comes down to the weather this type, this time of year, with the temperatures changing and the bacteria, and there's a lot of stuff about it, if you want to know. But Kevin and I came up with a plan to maybe make some public service announcements about this, so we can put it out to the residents, and so they know how the system works and what's going on. And another thing is, we did oversize the sewer in some places back in the two, early 2000s, late 2000s, and now we're finally getting enough homes to push the stuff down the sewer. It should help that, that odor problem. Again, appreciate it, Kevin, and, and I look forward to those little projects about what's going on over there.
Going to be the, I won't say it. I was going to say something, but I won't.
The hat's going to look different.
Would be one of those emojis?
Yep.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing then, I'll call for a resolution, please.
Resolution Number 5713. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., to provide design planning services for the waste, for the water reclamation facility Phase 4B upgrade project, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Wilson &amp; Company, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of Resolution Number 5713 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is Item I3. This is consider approval of Resolution Number 5714. Danny?
Yes, Mayor McFarland, members of the council, this is to consider the contract for City Hall Landscape Project to install new irrigation systems, remove turf, and install desert landscaping. This is a water conservation project. Staff recommends that the mayor and council authorize the city manager to order a contract with Tri Valley Landscaping, LLC, to complete the project. It is a local company that received the lowest bid. We had prepared and advertised a notice of bid, and it went out in August of 2000, just this year, and the bid met the requirements with the lowest bid to Tri Valley Landscaping. As you recall, this project will assist in our goal of reducing irrigation water consumption and our goal of the city of Casa Grande to 2030 general landscape plan as well to reduce water. And we do partner with Arizona Water as well, as we saw tonight. I actually work with their marketing person on us when we start this project to actually communicate with the community on how we're saving and what we're doing. We've met probably three times since we've received this, this award. So, as you recall, the outside in the front area, if you notice, there's swimming to grass out there right now that we didn't overseed, because that's the area that's actually going to be replaced. We're going to have different DG paths coming to that center area and that indention in the front area. We've done a study session showing those plans, so we're going to continue with those. So, and the project is ready to go now, after we get all the paperwork and contracts, if it's awarded by, by, by the council. This project is not to exceed $322,251. This includes the base bid and the alternative. So, the alternative, we were able to come under budget for that, so that's that. If you walk outside through the front, it comes down a slope, so we have, we'll be able to have some steps there, so it doesn't erode as much, so it should be a safer area. And it was approved through the regular budget process for $200,000 for the CIP, and we did receive the additional $150,000 grant from Arizona Water Infrastructure Authority as well, that the council approved to, to add to this project. And the available funds are $350,000, so it came in under that. So, I'd like to entertain any questions, if you have any.
Didn't we talk about this a couple years ago? All right. Well, good. Good to see that it's happening. I think it's a, it's a good project. I know, I remember seeing some of the drawings, and I think it'll be a good addition to City Hall, kind of break up some of all that grass we've got out there, so it'll be nice.
Well, not only, oh, not only that, Mayor, but, you know, we try to encourage our, you know, residents to conserve water.
Reducing grass, yeah.
And I like when you did the analysis, you said we're the largest commercial user, so it's good that we're, we're doing it. So, no, I'm, I'm happy to see that this is moving along.
Of course, we have more parks than anybody else, too.
True.
Is Raluka going to kind of take pictures as this thing goes along?
Oh, yeah. We'll make sure we do pictures, and we do, we have an idea to.
Time lapse, kind of a time lapse.
Put some pictures of different things, and that's, and that's one of the reasons that I'm talking with Arizona Water as well, their marketing person, talk about that. And I'm connecting our marketing people as well, to make sure that we spread the word as this project proceeds.
Good. Cool. Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Danny. I'll entertain a resolution number, please.
Resolution Number 5714. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Tri Valley Landscaping, LLC, to provide landscaping services for the City Hall Landscape Project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of a contract with Tri Valley Landscaping, LLC, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve Resolution Number 5714 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next, we have a couple of appointments on our boards and commissions that we are proposing for the council to approve tonight. Item J1 is consider approval of the reappointment of Mindy Dawkins and Robert White to the Board of Adjustments with terms to extend through November 17. First of all, I want to publicly thank them for their service. I thank them, this is their second term for both of them, that they are asking to be reappointed to, so if there are no objections, I would entertain a motion to approve these two candidates.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, congratulations to Mindy and to Robert, and thank you both again for serving. The next is Item J2. This is consider the approval and reappointment of Chris Hubbard to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also the new appointment of Mr. Cortez Smith, who's here tonight. Mr. Smith? Oh, Chris is here, too. Thank you, Chris. I didn't see a Hayden Mac there.
He's here.
She's too little.
So, thank you to both of you. We appreciate your service and willingness to volunteer. I hope you know what you're getting into in the planning and zoning, but that's just between you and me. No, seriously, it, it's a big job, and we do appreciate your volunteering, so thank you. Chris, for your past service, and Mr. Smith for stepping up for the new position. These commissions' terms extend through November 7 of 2027, and I would, if there's no discussion on it, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, congratulations to you both. Paul will be calling you. Paul will be calling you. Because I think you have a board meeting this week. He's already been through, he's already pre-approved. All right, good. Good one. Then you're ready to go, right? Okay. I know Chris has already got this down, so... All right, next is item K1. This is consider approval of ordinance number 1037.2. This is amending... Well, I'll let, I'll let you explain it.
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, this item is being brought for your consideration this evening as a result of discussions at your study session last month in relationship to elected official compensation. You might recall that was noted, the last formal action taken by council on adjusting compensation for Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members actually took place in, 24 years ago, in 2000. And so, a discussion was held in relationship to data that was extracted from the annual League of Cities and Towns Salary Survey using the comparator cities and towns that we use for our employee compensation plan update annually, looking at the, the salaries paid to mayor and council member positions, averaging those. And we extracted that number and are using that in our recommendation this evening. Traditionally, the mayor pro tem compensation has been placed at midpoint between council and mayor, and so that is noted as well. If you approve the ordinance this evening, the three new council members coming in will be paid at the higher compensation amount. The new mayor would be paid at the higher compensation amount. The council members who are in their current terms would continue to be paid at the current rate, presuming that one of the sitting council members would be elected mayor pro tem. That individual would be paid at the current compensation for mayor pro tem. So, that is the information that's brought for your consideration this evening. The, the ordinance from 2000 has been amended, it's included, and our city attorney's office has included the original ordinance for your information as well. And the data that was used was projected last time from our comparator cities and towns has also been included in your packet. And with that, if you have any questions that I can answer, I'll be glad to do that.
And it's got, these are from 2023, correct?
This is the data that, it's called the 2024 League of Cities and Towns Salary Survey, but the information is actually, in theory, effective on October 1st, 2023.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any comments or questions? All right, well, then, I, and in my eight years, I've not made a motion to accept one of our ordinances or... Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion to approve. Pardon me? Oh, can you, can you, can you give me an ordinance number, please? See, I didn't even know how to do it. How bad is that? Wow.
You were just so excited.
I was. I was so excited to do this. Thanks, Gloria, you just ruined it for me.
Ordinance number 1037.2. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending ordinance number 1037.1, setting new salaries for the mayor and council.
All right. Well, I would like to move for approval of ordinance number 1037.2 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Made it through.
That was hard, huh?
It was hard. All right. Well, that is it for tonight's business. We do have reports, so I'm going to start with you, Mr. Lavender.
No reports, sir.
Just a couple of things. Congratulations to the police department and the K-9 group for their first place win in the competition. That's just awesome. So, congratulations on that.
Good job. Thank you, chief.
Community Services, a Halloween competition was, was just a great idea. A lot of people got into that. Now, we're on to the Christmas, the Christmas competition. Also, wanted to say thank you to the city attorney's office for the Children's Garden last week. And I also would be remiss, you know, we just, we approved the grant from Gila River. Saturday, Alberto Gutierrez, after serving 50 years in public service for the state of Arizona, he was a longtime director for the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, passed away. And he supported our police department for years with grants and making sure that Casa Grande was taken care of and Penal County. So, I just wanted to, to mention him and ask people to have his family in their thoughts. That's it.
Thank you, Donna. Matt?
Thanks. Last Tuesday, we had the Chamber of Commerce Bowl for the, the Women's Flag Football Team Union versus Vista. It was a great game. Had a little injury at the end. Luckily, we've heard that everything was okay. So, we're going to present the trophy when the teams get together in the next couple of weeks or so. So, I want to thank your school, Jeff, for putting all that together and the Chamber of Commerce so we can present that trophy. So, that was a lot of fun, and it was a nice, cool night. So, that was even better. We got the youth commission had their shredding day last week, went really well. The mayor cleaned out his office as he's getting ready to move on, so he brought us a...
Brought several boxes.
Quite a load of stuff. And, and I did want to say concerning, because there has been concerns about the odor from the sewer system. And they did reply to me, too, that they take every odor complaint very seriously because it could be a sign of a problem. So, they check it out, the complaint they receive and investigate. Some, some they can take care of, and some it just, it's just like that. Yep. So, they did see one on CG Chat, and they went and checked it out, and everything seemed to be working. So, I do want to say that they did say that, so I appreciate that, Kevin, for you and Kim and your team over there. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
So, report it.
No reports.
Lisa?
Just, this is the time of activities. I mean, it seems like every day, you know, the last couple of weekends have been so crazy. But I did want to thank the community services for the Halloween, the harvest event, the other, for Halloween, it was great. It was so nice to see so many families participating in all the costumes and competitions and everything. So, thank you for a job well done from your department, as well as all the police and fire that are there for, for the safety. Then with the Halloween stroll downtown with Casa Grande Main Street, great, another great event. You know, the parade, we weren't in it this year, but I do thank the veterans organizations for continuing that parade and honoring our veterans throughout the community. It was so nice being there. As a matter of fact, Jody was my, my partner in the parade, and we were sitting next to a, a young family, a woman whose husband was just deployed that day to Germany. And so, it was just so timely that we were actually sitting there, and she brought her two young children. And it's just, we have to remember the sacrifices that so many families are making for our freedom. So, you know, it just makes you proud to be an American, and it was so nice to see all the veterans out there. So, great event, and then the car show at the Crossroads. Mayor picked a fancy red car, so that's nice. I, I had my favorites, but that was great. And, and we talked about the boards and commissions and everything that they do for us in our community. Tomorrow, Wednesday night, we are going to have a dinner for the boards and commission members. So, hopefully, those people that are here today and those that are watching that are on a board, I hope you come. We appreciate everything that you do. So, that's it. Tomorrow's election day, please make sure you vote. For those of you that haven't, please get in and vote or turn in your ballots.
Bob?
No report. Mayor.
All right. Well, I'm here to report that I voted already, so... I want to give a shout out to, really, to Deb Brunner and to Rebecca Stanley. And so, Mindy, please make sure you tell Rebecca that I called her out in a meeting. They were actually part of the CG Link Service showcased in the Tech Meets Transit. So, big shout out. Very proud of them for representing the city of Casa Grande and that, that kind of an honor that they were picked to represent, so... So, that was, that was very good. Again, shout out to the, to the police department and, and your K-9 unit. They were, they're awesome. And taking best of show there, so that was great. Remember that Purit and Cortson and Cortson and Treacle intersections will be under construction because of the new sewer line. So, I just want to remind everybody, don't get upset when you go through those interchanges. Try and avoid them if you can. So, because we are going to be burrowing underneath those interchanges, so there'll be some lane restrictions and some other stuff. And get CG alerts if you don't have it, because it will remind you all the time. In fact, today, reminders went out on the Gila River Bridge. There was some, also some closures or some signal issues down at Penal and, and Florence. So, all those alerts went out on CG Alert, and so it was, it's, it's a great system. Again, if you're not on it, please go to the city's website and sign up. It's, it's a great, it's a great service. It really is. And it's free. It's free. Okay, that's enough. I did attend an Inspire Ed program last week. It was for education. And they were honoring the president of APS. It was, it was a great program. It was at, up in Phoenix at the Camelback Inn. And so, they honored him for all of his work in education. And so, we, we were represented there. Busy weekend, as Lisa's already outlined. The Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce had a great golf tournament on Friday that, that we were participating in. And then one last thing, please mark your calendar for February 13th at Central Arizona College. So, you have plenty of time to plan for this. February 13th, from 9:00 to 1:00, Central Arizona College, it's for the Career Expo. So, if you have any kiddos, or if you want to know what's going on in the job area, or are you just looking for a job, there's lots of opportunities. I know that Richard's involved in it. You're not involved in it? Oh. I guess it's, I guess it is out in February. Anyway, it's called Worlds of Work, Penal County. So, please mark your calendar and plan...